If you will, barrel your heads and join me in a moment of silence. I'm in, and now I'll ask the Browns Chapel Elementary Tiger Pack or Tiger Cub Pack to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Go ahead.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, that was an outstanding job. This is the Browns Chapel Elementary School Tiger Cub Pack 320 from Browns Chapel Elementary School. Their Cub Master is Chris Kupchak and the Den Leader is Eric Cunningham and the Den Leader is Joy Kupchak and those attending tonight are Dalen Greer, you might want to stand up if I call your name, Dalen Greer, Dale Pierce, Wesley Cunningham, Ian Qualls, Albert Kupchak, Stephen Stewart, and Bryce Smith. They are all working on their Tiger Cub advancement, so we are pleased and proud to have you with us tonight. Thank you, that was wonderful. You may be seated. And y'all are free to stay or free to go, you're welcome to stay with us as long as you can. I know the Rutherford County Schools, I believe, are out tomorrow, so no telling what you'll be able to do tonight, staying up late. A couple of logos and some branding I want to show on the air. First, we have a new City TV logo, and the reason we're not going to be Channel 3 anymore is because ATT now carries our channel for government access and they can't get it on Channel 3, but they can get it on Channel 99. So we have moved away from the Channel 3 logo and now we are City TV and there's no change in service and no change in ability, just a change in the name and the way we brand our Murfreesboro Government Access Channel. So I hope if you have either AT&amp;T or Xfinity that you'll continue to watch us at the places that they've let us on. So I think we're going to stay at Channel 3, but we'll be called City TV now, not just Channel 3, so if you'll make that note. The second thing is, we're getting ready to experience a birthday here in Murfreesboro. On October the 17th, we will be 200 years old, according to the legislature, who on that date in 1811 named our fair village as the county seat for Rutherford County. I don't believe there was a city at the time, there were some lots and some people lived here, but I don't think they had a city government. So on October the 17th, we're going to kick off our 200th birthday celebration, and that's our logo, and we certainly encourage anyone and everyone who has a business in Murfreesboro or a civic organization or anybody that does any promotional materials to pick up and use that logo if they'd like to. We'll have a link on our website where you can get a copy of that and put it on any of the material. We'd like to have everybody celebrate for the next 18 months or so as we get excited about being 200 years old. The Vice Mayor helped form the government after that date, he's been on the council probably longest, it was almost 200 years.
195.
195, that's what I thought, okay. So that's exciting and there'll be more news to come on that, but I hope you'll all be aware of that. The next thing I think is a very important event, Fred Gray, who is a civil rights attorney and who was the man who represented Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Rosa Parks, as their attorney, will be at the Wright Music Hall on the campus of Middle Tennessee State University Monday 7:00 PM this coming Monday, February the 14th. I know that's Valentine's Day, but I think it's well worth it to get out and hear what Attorney Gray has to say. He certainly has a wealth of background and experience that I think would be interesting to all. And mentioning Valentine's Day, for those of you, I don't want you to forget, but love is in the air. And Amazon.com today announced its list of the top 20 most romantic cities in America. Guess who's number eight? Murfreesboro, Tennessee is number eight on the list of most romantic, I don't think that has to do with the mayor and the council, I think that's something else, but this is after compiling sales data of romance novels and relationship books.
The most needed.
Romantic comedy movies, Barry White albums, and other wellness products. On a per capita basis, with cities over 100,000 residents, the top 20 most romantic cities in the U.S. starts with Alexandria, Virginia, Knoxville, Tennessee, Orlando, Florida, Miami, Ann Arbor, Michigan, Columbia, South Carolina, Cincinnati, and our home, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, number eight. I would remind everyone that Amazon does not collect sales taxes for residents of the state of Tennessee, and that's probably a bad thing for us, but anyway, Amazon says we're one of the most romantic, so I just wanted to make sure that recognition was there. Also, by the way, I forgot to announce that the Tiger Pack is having their blue and gold banquet February the 28th, and if you're interested, I think you could possibly contact the Browns Chapel Elementary School and get reservations for that, it'll be 6:15 on February the 28th. And did I forget anything else? Are we ready to go? I know you're all thinking hearts and arrows and cupid and all that stuff. Okay, let's get started then.
Show me the love.
We're very pleased to have our other visitors with us tonight, I think we've got some leadership Rutherford folks that are here and other visitors, maybe some leadership Middle Tennessee and just people who are interested in what's going on, we're always excited to have you with us and we appreciate your attendance tonight. Council members, you have before you your consent agenda. If you've had an opportunity to review that, are there any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Mayor, if there are no questions, I move we approve the consent agenda.
All right, you have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion and second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time you have before you the meetings, the minutes of the regular meeting held on January the 27th. If you've had an opportunity to review that, are there any additions or deletions to the minutes as they are presented for the January 27th meeting?
The move to be approved.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance rezoning an area east of Armstrong Valley Road to single-family residential 15 RS 15 District.
Move for passage on the third reading.
Motion, second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Like to consider at this time for passage on third and final reading, an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33 Waters and Sewers, Section 33-2, 33-50, relative to connection fees for water and sewer taps.
Move for passage on third reading.
Motion, second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Obstand.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll conduct a public hearing and consider a certificate of compliance for the Old Fort Liquor and Wine, 144 Casey Lane, Suite B. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, this is a new location and state law requires we have a public hearing, the application and the background checks are in your packet and they do meet our requirements.
All right, they do meet the requirements. At this time, if there are no questions, I'll open a public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak for or against this certificate of compliance for Old Fort Liquor and Wine? Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion that we accept this certificate of compliance?
Move to be approved.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll conduct a public hearing and consider a certificate of compliance for Chill Wine and Spirits, 2445 Memorial Boulevard, Suite D. Any questions before I open the public hearing? Ms. Wright?
Mayor, this is also a new location and the application and background checks are attached and they do meet our requirements.
All right, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against this certificate of compliance for Chill Wine and Spirits? Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Is there a motion that we accept this certificate of compliance?
No move.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on January 13th, 2011, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider amending the planned residential development, PRD District, located along Dill Lane. Mr. Tim Reynolds is the applicant notice of the said public hearing was published in the January 23rd, 2011 issue of the local newspaper. Welcome, Ms. Ely.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. The first public hearing we have scheduled tonight is to consider amending a PRD zone, of course, PRD stands for Planned Residential District, for property located south of John Bragg Highway and just west of Dill Lane. If you look at the maps that are included in your package, you can see the area shaded blue is the area that we are considering. Approximately 17.81 acres and currently there are two single-family houses located on this property. Back in 2009, the planning commission, the city council, approved the request to zone this property PRD to allow apartments on this property. No development has occurred and since then that applicant has not been able to move forward with the plan. So Mr. Reynolds is a new applicant and he would like to be able to construct some apartments, but with a slightly different plan, which means that they'd have to come before you and get that approval, since with a planned PRD zone, it's very specific and any changes have to be approved by you. The properties that are located to the west and to the south are zoned RS 10, Single Family Residential District, and they're part of a developed single-family subdivision. Just to the south of the property, the rather large parcel, is a church. Property to the north is zoned RM 16, and that's the location of an existing apartment complex. And there's also property to the north zone CH, and that's where a new bank is located on the corner of Dill Lane. Just across Dill Lane, the property is on PCD, that's Plain Commercial District, and that's where Tractor Supply Company is. And of course, on the other side of Dill Lane are some apartments as well. The current PUD allows the construction of 14 three-story apartment buildings for a total density of 260 units on this property. So there are 14 three-story apartment buildings. The proposed plan allows a maximum of 276 units, so that's an increase of 16 units, and increases the density from 14.6 dwelling units per acre to 15.5 dwelling units per acre. As proposed in the plan before you, there are 11 three-story buildings and five two-story buildings with first-floor garages. Each of these plans proposes a package of amenities that will be provided to applicants. And this plan differs because it does provide some garages in addition, and automobile wash in addition to what was proposed before. The construction of these apartments is proposed to be in two phases, however, in the first phase, the applicant will install the buffer so that it will have time to grow before they begin construction on the second phase. The second phase will be closer to Atlas Street, Phase 1 will be the part that's closer to Dill Lane. About 75% of the development will be constructed during Phase 1, and so that's what the applicant's requesting to go ahead and get started on. There is an emergency crash gate at Atlas Street that was proposed as part of the plan before, and that's what staff wanted and expected, and so they're just having that remain as emergency crash gate entrance. So the people who live in these apartments will not be able to utilize Atlas Street as a way to come in, come out, they'll have to use Dill Lane primarily. The applicant will be making some improvements to Dill Lane that are contiguous with this property, that will include a right turn lane into the apartments. Also, there'll be a sidewalk installed from Dill Lane to the north going toward John Bragg Highway. The planning commission did recommend approval of this unanimously. I did include in your packets the program book, and this will become a part of the zoning if you do decide to amend the PRD zone. Mr. Matt Taylor's here and he'd like to go through a description of the proposed request. After he does so, if you have questions from staff, we'll be glad to answer them, otherwise you should conduct a public hearing before making your final recommendation. Mr. Taylor, you're right.
... the book that is provided, you have an overlay, I guess, an old and a new, and I don't see it annotated which is which.
The overlay portion is the old.
The see-through is the old.
Yes, sir.
And the new one is the base sheet.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions before Mr. Taylor gets started? Department best wait, I want to make sure where we were on that.
If there are no other questions, I'll go and get started.
I think you're ready, go ahead.
All right. Again, my name is Mr. Matt Taylor of SEC here in town. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. John Harney of Park Trust, Mr. Mike Mudridge, and Mr. Daniel Hathaway, both of Hathaway Construction. We're here tonight to introduce to you the Richland Falls proposed development. It is an amendment to the previously approved Reserve at Dill Lane PRD. I want to start by going over a few of the details of the previously approved plan, and then we'll move on to get into some more details of our new plan. The old plan was the Reserve at Dill Lane, had 260 units, all those were in three-story buildings, there were townhouse-style units where you had living on multiple floors, and we had a mixture of one, two, and four-bedroom units, with the majority of those being the one and twos and approximately 20 being the four-bedroom units. They were primarily geared toward the student housing market, trying to capture that from MPSU. We did not have any garages there, and our materials for our buildings consisted of a mixture of brick and hardy siding or cement board siding. Here you can see the original layout, we did have an access off Dill Lane and then the gated entry, our emergency gated entry off of Atlas Street. And here's an example of what the buildings looked like in that plan. Our plan, we still want to stay with the PRD zoning and simply amend that, we are requesting 16 additional units with this new plan, however, we are introducing a two-story option. All of our units are a flat style, all living will be on one floor contiguous together. We have eliminated all the four-bedroom units, introduced a small number of three-bedroom units, and then stayed with ones and twos primarily throughout. One major difference between this plan and the original plan was, the original plan targeted the student housing, we're not targeting that market. We don't, we know that there will be some that live here, but that's not our main target. Our main target is the empty nesters, young families, young professionals, that want all the nice amenities that we offer, the high-quality buildings, but they don't want the responsibility of the maintenance of those. Real quickly, here's our current plan, you can see our access points stayed in the same places, and we're still maintaining a large percentage of green space on site as well in the buildings themselves. Some more detail for our...
Go back to the buildings. Two and three-story?
Yes, sir. There's a mixture. We have five two-story buildings on site and the remainder are three stories. The site design itself, we want to have a very clean site, so we've, we're going to do all underground utilities, don't want to intrude on our neighbors, so we're going to meet the GDO lighting standards, no light bleeding over the property lines, over 40% open space, we do have a gated entry, try to create that nice subscale and secure feel, and we are introducing garages. The orange buildings you'll see on site are the two-story buildings, we tried to concentrate those in the southwest corner, that's where we abut our existing residential neighbors, feel like the two-story is more sensitive, more in line with what the single-family homes there represent versus the three-story. Landscaping, around the large majority of the property, we do have a fence row, in that fence row we have some fairly mature trees, we want to keep all those trees and then clean out some of the underbrush, the scrub, and then supplement any real thin areas with new plantings to try to create some appropriate buffers. In addition, our buildings themselves will be, have a strong foundation planting, just try to accentuate and coordinate with the nice architecture and building materials that we're proposing. Sample palette, we're going to have maples, some magnolias, some red buds, hibilias, and some roses, more complete list of what we anticipate our palette could be is included in your pattern book as well. The building design itself is next, I do want to say we worked with staff pretty closely on this to make some improvements to our building designs, try to make them more appealing and a final better product, and overall a better project for us as well as everyone else. As I mentioned earlier, we are introducing a two-story product here, we committed to at least a minimum of 35% masonry for all of our buildings. Our materials will be a mixture of cement board siding, stone veneer, metal roofing, architectural shingles, and some cement shaped siding. Here's an example of the three stories on the end as well as the fronts, both the other sides are basically just mirror options of this right here. You can see we've got a lot of ins and outs, multiple building planes, multiple roof lines, using some nice warm colors there, quality materials that are going to last for years to come. The two-story option uses the same material options, same color options, the living quarters are on the second floor, and the first floor is all garages, and all the garages, we'll utilize that carriage-style garage door that you see there. Amenities, we tried to spread those across the site, develop a strong amenity package for the property, we want to start that at the front entry with the gates for that secure feel, and then out the street, we want a prominent entry sign to help establish that feel as soon as you enter the property, followed up with some nice landscape medians and appropriate scale pedestrian lighting. And then finally, once you enter through the gates, kind of top that off with a multi-tiered raised water feature. Internal to the property, we tried to spread the amenities throughout, try to make those strategic and convenient to the neighbors, to the residents of the neighborhood. We have a sandpit volleyball court up next to the clubhouse, and then into the site we have two larger green areas that we want to supplement with picnic tables, benches, grills, and strategic areas, try to promote that use. Our main amenity feature is the clubhouse, we try to concentrate a large amount of amenities here, try to create that as a hub of activity, starting with the architecture of the building, try to make it very attractive. As you go in, we want a nice pool or cabana area, internally we'll have computers, pool tables, media room, and exercise room. Now available for any questions as well as anybody else on the development team.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? The entry gate will have a card entry or...
It'll be a keypad, and the residents will have to use that keypad, that'll be like a call box for any visitors, it'll also operate in Yelp mode for emergency vehicles as well.
And what about the traffic on Dill Lane?
We have previously did a traffic study with the original plan, and due to similar size and nature, we felt like they were very similar, no reason to re-perform that study, and it showed that all the levels of services would still, they would decrease slightly, but they would not become unacceptable. And we didn't need a left turn lane in our site or a right turn lane or any kind of improvements at the intersection with Dill and Mercury either.
You did not?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor?
Do we have anyone here with staff as far as the traffic department that would concur with that, as far as the entry onto Mercury at Dill? I know we, I think we all got an email from someone that was, kind of had some concerns over that, and I don't know what staff had concluded.
Yes, sir, I received a copy of that email, and I had a meeting with our traffic director and our traffic engineer this afternoon along with Ms. Ely to discuss this project, to make sure that we had the latest word on it. What they, and I think we all agree on this, because we've also been reviewing the site plan for it, which has been submitted for planning commission review at our next meeting, that'll be on the 16th. But the warrants are not there for traffic signal at Dill Lane and Mercury Boulevard, even with this project. It's something that the state would have to approve, and the state is saying the thresholds that are required to justify construction of a signal just are not there. It will be something that our traffic department will continue to monitor, they feel that it may be some time before additional development happens on Dill Lane that would reach that threshold, but it's one of those things they're going to continue to watch. We are requiring that they construct a left turn, excuse me, a right turn into their site off of Dill Lane to help facilitate traffic.
Off of Dill or off...
Off of Dill Lane into their site.
Into their site.
Although it was not warranted by the traffic study, we felt it was something that would help make the traffic flow better, and the developer was very amenable to doing. It was something we required in the previous plan development, and this developer, when he looked at the site, he saw that he ought to do the same thing. It's something that would make for an improvement for his residents, so he feels it's a good idea. We did discuss amongst staff the idea of opening up the back access onto Atlas and allowing the traffic back there, but we felt it was one of those things we had to balance, and with the previous plan development, when we discussed it, we felt it would probably be wrong to be introducing multifamily traffic, this concentration onto a street like that, into an established neighborhood, and felt that it would still be better on Dill Lane. With regards to the operations of the intersection at Dill Lane and Mercury Boulevard, that is a little bit unusual in the sense that the median is extra wide, and you can cross that in two stages, as you're making a left turn onto Mercury Boulevard, there's a refuge in that median area, so that you don't have to pull out of there in one fell swoop and make your left turn onto John Bragg. There's a refuge area that can help give you a little bit more protection and make it work a little better.
I know it was mentioned about maybe an acceleration lane going, I guess it would be going west, maybe toward town, if you got into the middle of that median, if maybe more than one vehicle actually tried to cross that, one may be kind of hung out in the middle, will we monitor that?
Yes, we will, and that is something that we would, that would probably be independent of this project anyway, it's the kind of thing that our traffic department monitors, and I believe that there was a situation, and I'll continue to develop, they bring recommendations. Of course, again, that is a state highway and it requires their concurrence and permission to do anything like that.
Other questions for Mr. Adelot or Mr. Taylor? All right, if there are no more questions, I'll open a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this amendment to the planned residential development, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Anyone at all? Last chance. If not, then I'll... If not, then I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to amend the PRD Planned Residential Development District located along Dill Lane.
Move for approval.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on January thirteenth, 2011, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately 1.3 acres, the Manson Pike Center, from planned commercial development, PCD District, to commercial fringe CF District, and to rezone approximately 2.5 acres located on the corner of Manson Pike and Brinkley Road, from single-family residential 15 District to commercial fringe District. Rajish and Shereak Patel are the applicants. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the January twenty-third, 2011 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Ely, please continue.
Thank you again. This next public hearing is to consider rezoning properties that are shaded on the map before you. They're located south of Manson Pike. The property shaded orange is currently zoned PCD, Planned Commercial District, and the Patels have requested that that property, which is 1.3 acres, be rezoned from PCD to CF, Commercial Fringe District. The second parcel that is included as part of this, a part of this application, is the property colored orange, or colored purple on the map before you. That property is zoned RS-15, and that was included by the Planning Commission as an additional area to include, because that RS-15 area basically is a remnant of some old zoning that was there. You can see that the adjacent zoning to the parcel that's orange is CF, Commercial Fringe District, and that completely surrounds the property shaded purple. And the property shaded purple is actually on the corner of Brinkley Road and Manson Pike. So that was included by the Planning Commission, and the owner of that property is listed favorably as having that rezoned. As a side note, the property that is zoned Commercial Fringe, that faces Manson Pike, the Plan, Planning Commission has reviewed a site plan for a store to be located on that property. But the PCD property owned by the Patels was zoned PCD in two thousand five, in two thousand six, February two thousand six, and at that time it was vacant property, and they wanted to build a convenience store on the property. And it was at the request of Planning Commission that they'd come to us with the plan zoning, plan zoning application, so that we could regulate and make, ensure that the property is going to look good and be developed as a nice property. At this time, it is developed, and it's a gas station, and there are two suites that they have available for rent that are connected to the gas station. Both those suites are vacant at this time, so the applicants feel that it would better suit their property, since it's already constructed, to zone it CF like the properties across the street, which are currently zoned CF. So that's their request. The current PCD zone does allow various types of uses there, and I've listed, or I've included a paragraph with the types of uses that are permitted. They fall into four categories: retail trade, finance, insurance, and real estate, personal services, and business services. The property that is a J, or the property that surrounds the PCD parcel is currently zoned CL, which is Local Commercial District. Now, there was, there was a little confusion with this parcel, because when it was annexed, we were under, we believed, we, planning staff, council, and Planning Commission, that the CL property was zoned Single Family Residential District. When the application was made to rezone this PCD property to CF, the owner, Mr. Meadows, approached staff and said, hey, when, when it was in the county, it was zoned Commercial. So I think that our zoning ordinance would have the zones, a commercial zone rather than the residential. I researched it, talked to the county planning director, and found out that in fact that property was zoned PCD, so it should have been zoned CL when it was annexed. So that CL zone, of course, you know is an interim zone, it's basically a holdover zone. Any commercial zone in the county is default, by default, zoned CL. And so we did run a corrected notice in the paper, because initially the notice that we ran in the paper showed that property is RS-15. That's not correct, because we, we since did some research and found out it's CL. So that's a little background on the property that's adjacent to the subject area, but it's not, doesn't deal with the properties that are actually included in this request. So just beyond that CL property are some properties that are zoned RS-15, and are large single-family lots that are basically undeveloped. And to the north is our properties that are in the unincorporated, unincorporated area of Rutherford County. So this request is to rezon both these parcels to CF, Commercial Fringe District. One is RS-15, and the other parcel is PCD, Planned Commercial District. The applicant has a representative here this evening, Mr. Brick Murphy, and he'd like to introduce the item to you, and I guess give you some additional information if you'll let him speak at this time, after which you should conduct a public hearing. I did want to mention that the Planning Commission did recommend rezoning these properties unanimously. There are five Planning Commission members present that evening, and they all have recommended that you do approve this rezoning request. Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Murphy?
Good evening, Mayor Ag, members of the City Council. I'm Brick Murphy of the law firm of Murphy &amp; Murphy. Our firm is located at 805 South Church Street here in Romantic Murfreesboro. Representing the applicant, the Patel family, they are requesting that the property be rezoned from planned commercial development to commercial fringe. If y'all will, if y'all will bear with me, I've got some materials I think might be Our track is, the track that I've tried to, or attempted to highlighting in green there, it's labeled "Area Proposed to be Rezoned from PCD to Commercial Fringe." As you can see, surrounding my client's property is a property I tried to highlight in orange as well, which is labeled CL, which is a commercial classification. Our property, as you can see, is on the corner of Manson Pike and Brinkley Road. Just across the road is the sliver that staff and the Planning Commission has requested be part of our application, so it's before y'all for commercial fringe rezoning as well. Right, to the right, as you'll see, highlighted in pink, is a large Commercial Fringe track, which I believe there's a planned Dollar General for, and I believe the Planning Commission has considered a site plan on that. If you'll turn to the second page, there's a picture of the strip center, which is on this property. So the building is already built. The concerns that y'all would normally have surrounding a rezoning, in terms of what's the property going to look like, is it going to have adequate landscaping? Is it going to be attractive? Is it going to be the kind of thing that the city's going to be proud of? Those concerns are, I believe, don't exist here, because you know what it's going to be, the building's there. The reason my client's requesting this change in zoning is he'd like to have the flexibility that the large track down Manson Pike has, that's already zoned Commercial Fringe. It's a commercial area. They'd like the flexibility associated with Commercial Fringe, and they're just asking to be put on the same footing as, as the other properties in that area. And we just ask that y'all vote in favor of the application. Mr. Charlie Patel and PJ Patel are here. They're the owners of the property, and I'm here to answer any questions y'all may have.
Any questions for Mr. Murphy before I open the public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Murphy. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this amendment to rezone, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against? If no one is here to speak, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area, the Manson Pike Center, to Commercial Fringe District, and to rezone an area located on the corner of Manson Pike and Brinkley Road to a Commercial Fringe CF District.
Move for approval.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on January thirteenth, 2011, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately 18.4 acres located west of Fortress Boulevard and south of Manson Pike, from a planned unit development, PUD District, to residential multifamily District, to multifamily sixteen, RM-16 District, and 43.1 acres from planned unit development, PUD District, to highway commercial, CH District. Mr. Charles Waite is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the January twenty-third, 2011 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely, march on.
Thank you again, sir. You have before you a request that, again, is a two-part request. If you will turn your attention to the map that I've included in your packets, and it's also on the television screen, the area that's shaded blue is the 18.4 acres, which is currently zoned PUD, Planned Unit District, and for which the applicant is asking you to zone it RM-16, Multi-Family Residential District. The area, the area that's shaded orange is the area that is currently zoned PUD, and the applicant's requesting that you zone to CF, or CH Highway Commercial District. This property is within our Gateway Design Overlay District, and the rezoning, any rezoning that would happen tonight wouldn't change that, it would remain within our GDO District and the GDO one. The, this PU, this property, both the blue and orange area, is 61.5 acres, and it's currently a part of the planned development that we refer to as the Manson Pike Crossing. The properties to the north and east are zoned CH, which are Highway Commercial District. Properties to the west are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. However, in October of this year, they will be included in Murfreesboro city limits. The property that's to the, east of the property will be the subject of the next public hearing, and the property along the southern lot line is the Gateway at Aldridge Apartments that are located on Fortress Boulevard. The current PUD, Planned Unit District, plan, and I'll show on the screen before you a copy of the plan, calls for a large mixed-use retail center. This plan was proposed, of course, before our avenues came to our community, and the avenues, as you know, is located on the other side of Interstate 24, because this is located very close to Interstate 24. It's a mixed-use lifestyle center with commercial and multifamily components. The lifestyle center is the central component of the development, and it was the offer, it was to offer cafes, shops, a grocery store, drugstores, family entertainment venues with planned supporting uses such as housing, restaurants, office employment. And so, as you know, with the change in the economy, and I guess a change in the market, and because, of course, this has been a zoned planned development for several years, however, nothing's happened, it's, I guess it's just not likely that this plan will be developed with the proposed plan. Also, another factor that makes it even less likely that this will actually be developed is that, and you can see the black magic marker on the next, the next page is actually where I just took a marker and showed you where the roadway alignment is. You can see that our new road that we're constructing out there basically obliterates the plan. It runs right through it, through some major buildings, and would cause, the applicant couldn't build the planned development as proposed anyway because of our new road alignment. So he's coming before you to request that you do rezone these properties, the 18.4 acres from PUD to RM-16, and the 43.1 acres from PUD to CH. The request that he's making is consistent with our general development plan for the Blackman community, which does recommend that the northern, that northern portion of this property develop as an interstate-oriented commercial node, and the southern portion to be developed as local office area. High-density residential uses are, are proposed as well, so the RM-16 zone that he's requesting would, would fall in line with that plan, the general development plan for the Blackman community. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this rezoning request unanimously, and I don't believe there's anybody here to give you a presentation for it, so if you have questions before the public hearing, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing before making your decision on whether to rezone these properties.
Any questions for Ms. Ely before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against these proposed amendments and the rezoning of these two parcels, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address.
Mayor Bragg and council members, my name is Charlie Waite. I represent Pocket Creek Station, which is a partnership that is requesting this rezoning. And I believe that Ms. Ely correctly and distinctly stated the history and issues that impact our property. I would be pleased to answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, I would respectfully request your approval of this rezoning, and if approved, I pledge to continue our efforts to bring high-quality retail options within the Gateway Corridor, and I appreciate your consideration. And also wanted to state that my research far preceded that of Amazon, which is why I moved here five years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak about Romantic Murfreesboro? Anyone else at all? Anyone else here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we will consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located west of Fortress Boulevard and south of Manson Pike, to residential multifamily sixteen, RM-16 District, and highway commercial CH District.
Move for his passage.
All right, you have a motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on January thirteenth, 2011, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately 18.44 acres along Gresham Lane and Fortress Boulevard, from single-family residential 15, RS-15 District, to highway commercial, CH District, and approximately 10.8 acres from Commercial Fringe CF District to Highway Commercial CH District, for a total of 29.24 acres. Twin B Farm and Investment Partners are the applicant's. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the January twenty-third, 2011 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely, continue.
Thank you. This, the fourth public hearing, and the final time that you'll listen to me present, is for a rezoning request that's located along John Rice Boulevard. And again, this is a two-part request, and the property is located along the realigned John Rice Boulevard and along Fortress Boulevard. The area that's shaded blue on the map before you and the map that's on the screen is currently zoned RS-15, Single Family Residential District, and the request is to change that to CH, Highway Commercial District. The area shaded orange is currently zoned CF, which is Fringe Commercial, Commercial Fringe District, and the request is to rezone that CF area to CH as well, so that's, all this property will, for a total of 29.24 acres, will be zoned CH, Highway Commercial District. The properties to the south are in the unincorporated, unincorporated area of Rutherford County, and are developed single-family subdivisions, and are also, to the south along Fortress Boulevard is the location of some condominiums, and those are zoned PRD, Planned Residential District. Just across Fortress Boulevard is the application which you just considered to be rezoned from PUD to CH and RM-16, so although it's zoned PUD, if it passes third reading, it will be zoned CH and then RM-16. Properties to the north of these properties are zoned CH, Highway Commercial District. Interstate 24 runs along the eastern side of the property, currently zoned CF, Commercial Fringe District. The applicant's requesting to rezone 21.91 acres to CH, and the property that's shaded blue that is located just north of the condos is the future location of the, of a church, and that church has applied for a special use permit to be allowed in RS-15 zone. If this property is rezoned to CH, then they will no longer need a special use permit because a church is a use that's permitted by right in that district, and the applicant, although they weren't a part of the original request, they have been contacted and didn't want to be included in this rezoning request, because a church, it would just be better for their design if they were zoned CH. And then, of course, the applicants, there are two applicants that are requesting this rezoning request. Both these properties are within our Gateway Design Overlay District now, and if you do rezone them, they will remain in our Gateway Design Overlay District, GDO one, which means they'll go through our ordinary review process with the Planning Commission. Mr. Matt Taylor's here this evening, and I think he has a brief presentation for you regarding this request. This, the Planning Commission did recommend rezoning of this property unanimously, and there is an ortho photo of the properties included in your packets, if you would like to reference that, so that you can see what's out there. Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Murphy?
Yes. The church is the rectangle property, if you're looking at the TV, does his hand show up? It's the rectangular piece of property that's just below the RS-15 label.
All right.
It's between the PRD and the RS-15 label, so that's the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening again, council. Before I get started, I have some letters from surrounding property owners in support of this I'd like to pass around to you. While I was going around, I'll go ahead and get started. I'm Mr. Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm here tonight representing both the Smith family as well as the Investment Partners. I want to just give a brief history on each property, and then I'll take any questions if you have any. I'll start with the Smith family. The Smiths have lived on, farmed or bought this property for well over a half-century now. During that time, they've seen Rutherford County as well as specifically the city of Murfreesboro grow by tremendous amounts. While a large portion of that growth has occurred past them and around them, and during that time, the city of Murfreesboro sought to make several infrastructure improvements in the area, and each time, the Smiths have participated willingly and have benefited from that in times. The first of those improvements would have been Fortress Boulevard, and the most recent would have been the realignment of Fortress Manson and Gresham Lane, which is currently under construction. The Investment Partners' property was originally rezoned to Commercial Fringe in two thousand two. Then in two thousand four, the Gateway Design Overlay District was enacted by the city, and both these properties, the Smiths and the Investment Partners' property, were included in that. Upon that enactment, those properties, the surrounding neighbors, as well as the city, instantly got some protections built into those guidelines. Those protections can be seen on the north side of the interstate as you go through the avenue, the hospital, multiple other developments on that side. Since two thousand four, there have been several other large changes in that area that have completely changed the nature of this area, these properties specifically, and the surrounding properties. Those changes include the construction of the Manson Pike and Medical Center Parkway Interchange, which is now open, has been for several years, the construction of Medical Center Parkway, and then most recently, the realignment of Fortress and Manson, which is ongoing at this time. Each of these has changed the area, making it more ideal, and actually preferred for a wider range of commercial uses than what was previously thought. Approximately three years ago, the city approached these applicants, these property owners, in discussions on the realignment as they saw, as the city saw a need to fix a potential problem in the future before any development occurred. Both property owners agreed to put any plans on hold and donate the land for those three years while the city performed these improvements. Now that the construction is winding up, both applicants anticipate an increase in volume of potential suitors being interested in the properties, and would like to go ahead and get an appropriate commercial zoning in place. Therefore, we request the commercial highway, as we see that will allow wider use for the potential suitors to service everyone's needs in these areas. I'm available for any questions along with the applicants.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? If not, I'll open a public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this amendment to rezone, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading on ordinance to consider a proposed amendment to rezone an area along Gresham Lane and Fortress Boulevard to Highway Commercial, CH District.
Murfreesboro Passage. Mayor, may I ask a question?
You certainly may.
Ms. Ely, on site plan review, the Planning Commission has the opportunity, if it so chooses, to beef up some landscaping and things to protect the existing neighborhood.
That's correct, but especially... Especially correct because this is within our Gateway Design Overlay District, so the minimum requirements are higher than what we have in other areas of our community, but also you have an opportunity to, if you see where it would be a better design, to have them beef up the landscaping or the building, the way it looks or its placement. So you definitely have that opportunity during site plan review.
So that would be an additional protection for some of the residential neighbors in the area.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In addition to already being higher than normal, so... Is there a second?
We have a motion.
Second.
All right, a motion and second. Any questions on the motion? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bradger.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Brad.
Aye. We'll hear now from our Honorable Judge Ewing Sellers with regards to expanding city court hearing dates. Judge Sellers, welcome.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. As requested, I am bringing you a recommendation tonight to expand the hours of the city court. We are suggesting a pilot program to benefit both the public and our Murfreesboro police officers, and the benefit to the public is, in addition to the city court dockets that are held every Tuesday and Thursday each week, recommending an additional docket on the second Thursday of each month at seven PM, and on the fourth Tuesday of each month at seven PM. The fourth Tuesday will coincide with the city school board meeting held each month on that day, and the thought is, the second Thursday, city court docket more than likely will coincide with a city council meeting held on that evening as well. That way, the building is open, you have security, we'll have security with a police officer present, and conclude our docket hopefully within about two hours. The expanded hours will give those folks that find it difficult, if not impossible, to come to court during the daytime. It will also provide an additional court hearing time for the officers who serve the two to ten o'clock shift. And the project is recommended to begin at the same time that the police department rolls out their electronic citation issuance, and we're going to do that for a couple of reasons. Number one, the notices that the citizens receive when they receive a citation will include a statement that they need to contact the clerk's office to let them know if they intend to contest the citation. And that way, the police officers are being excused from coming to court on the initial citation hearing date, which will free them up to perform other duties, perhaps reduce overtime pay, and help the city with regard to cost and expense in that fashion. The notification requirement will also be posted on the city's website, so there's plenty of notice of this change. And the pilot project, again, recommended to coincide with when the police roll out their issuance of electronic citations, which is where, instead of us receiving handwritten citations, we'll receive electronically the citations and save us a little time as well. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Mr. McFarland.
Judge Sellers, just going to tell you, fantastic job on putting this together. I think it's something that we've seen over the last couple of years and from recommendations that we've seen. For example, a police officer that works from ten until seven in the morning, and then they have to hang around until ten o'clock, so some of these individuals are fourteen hours, sixteen hours that they're waiting around for court appearances, not to mention the overtime that we're paying. So I think that we'll find out when we study this pilot program that we're not only adding a service for residents to be able to not have to take off work to come in and come to court, but also being able to save money for our taxpayers on not having officers having to hang around just to go to court. So it's a great start, so fantastic job.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, Your Honor, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
This time, we'll consider recommendations of the building and codes director with regards to bids for the City Hall Energy Efficiency Block Grant. Mr. Whitaker, welcome.
Evening, mayor, members of the council. The city received a block grant sometime last year for energy efficiency upgrades. We decided to use that money to upgrade the lighting, heating and air. In this building, it's approaching nineteen years of age, and most of that equipment needs to be replaced. The grant was for nine hundred and six, it's nine hundred and six thousand dollars, one hundred. We received four bids to do the work at City Hall, and those four bids, the lowest bidder was John Bichard's and Son Company. Their lump sum bid was nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. In those bids, we had an alternate, lucky we did. The alternate was for the parking garage lighting. We were afraid that we would not have enough monies to cover the retrofit of the City Hall in the parking garage. The parking garage alternate was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to replace the lighting in the parking garage. When you reduce that amount from the nine ninety-five seven, the bid amount was seven hundred, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. We asked the council approve this contract to do that work. Also enclosed in your package, we have a recommendation from our consulting engineer who's looked over those bids and has recommended John Bichard and Company to do that work. Also, there's a bid tally sheet in there as well. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions regarding the energy efficiency grant.
Any questions for Mr. Whitaker? Mr. Whitaker, was there an anticipation of saving some energy costs here?
Oh, absolutely. The lighting that we're going to put in was going from the four above lighting, and I say lighting, City Hall, we plan on replacing all of the lighting. We're going to go up to a tube up fluorescent, which is a lower wattage. We had a lighting engineer design that for us. Intech Engineering actually did all the design, as well as replacing the chiller, and that is the whole premise, and we have to track this for the federal government, our cost savings as well over there.
Have you warned Murfreesboro Electric?
We have not. But actually, to be honest with you, Murfreesboro Electric was instrumental in helping us. They helped us do an energy audit as well as TBA before we applied for the grant. We knew there'd be a savings, and therefore we went after the money.
Was there any additional cost estimated for going ahead and re-retrofitting the parking structure?
Well, the current bid we have are the alternates, two hundred and seventy thousand. Now, that probably could come in a little cheaper. We had proposed in our bid LED-type lights, which have a ten-year lifespan on before they have to be replaced, for low-wattage lighting. Unfortunately, we just don't have the monies at this time, but we are seeking other avenues to try to secure funding to continue to do that. TBA is actually offering some money, but unfortunately, the people that are monitoring our usage of this says that you can't double-dip and use the TBA money in the energy efficiency block grant, so...
How much additional money is it?
It depends on the amount of savings. It's based upon the amount of savings that you would produce.
I mean, are you going to double the two hundred and seventy thousand, or...
Oh, you mean the TBA money?
No, no. How much more money to retrofit the lighting in the parking structure?
Actually, with the deduction of the two seventy, we came in at what we projected for our City Hall retrofit. Unfortunately, we would have to come up, we tried value engineering to make the parking garage lighting work, but basically with the lighting spec, we would need an additional two hundred and seventy currently to make it work out.
Looking at, I spoke with Raymond Hillis today about that. We've removed every other bulb as a way to try to save some energy in the parking garage, but that is something we are going to try to find some additional funding sources, but may need to tackle that project in the near future.
So you're thinking it's going to cost a half a million dollars to replace the lights in the parking structure, is that right?
No, I don't believe it'll be that much. I think that the bid price we got was the two seventy using the LED light, so it'd be something...
I still don't understand why you're not going ahead with that, though, is what I'm...
We would have to include that in the CIP, mayor, we just don't have...
And how much additional money would it be, is what I'm asking?
Based on this bid price, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
But you have a grant, which would...
Point, mayor, what may be confusing you is there are some engineering services, not only for the design of this, but the monitoring that also are being paid for from the grant.
And how much additional is that?
Mr. Whitaker, do you have that?
I don't have those numbers, but right offhand, I think the, for our numbers, the engineering, for the Intech Engineering was around thirty thousand, and we budgeted for the consulting engineering, I think it was around ninety. Now, we don't anticipate using that, but we do have ten percent contingency in here because one thing that the contractors can't do is see what's throughout the building with the ceiling tile in, so we have that contingency money in in case there's change orders to try to protect us. And as everyone knows, there is a good possibility we'll have some change orders come through.
They're actually going to be going into offices and taking out the light fixture and replacing it with a new one, so depending on what happens when we get up in the ceiling, if there's wiring issues or other problems, we want to make sure that we've got sufficient money and contingency to cover that.
Not to mention probably that we could have some drop ceiling issues or different things like that when we start pulling lights out.
Another issue that has complicated this is, this work will be done in the afternoons and additionally on the weekends. Seeing as how the entire building is utilized Monday through Friday, eight to four-thirty, and in the afternoons, we have to schedule around that, and we'll have to utilize our staff. Some of that monies will also be used for staffing, because we have to have people with the workers when they're in the building afterwards and on weekends.
All right, any questions for Mr. Whitaker regarding this recommendation? All right, then, is there a motion that we accept this bid? There was a motion, I need a second. Thank you, Mr. Young. I was about to, you know, throw this money away.
Call the pod?
Yeah.
We're having a conversation.
Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bradger.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Brad.
Aye. Speaking of change orders, consider recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Director with approval of the change order number three for sportscom outdoor pool, approval of a contract with Johnson and Bailey Architects LLC, for architectural and engineering services for the renovation of Old Fort Ag Center, and approval of a grant for Kids Castle Playground. Gentlemen, welcome.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I do have three items for your consideration, the first item being change order for the sportscom outdoor pool, and that is change order number five. It may show change order number three, but it's change order number five. Johnson and Bailey Architects has processed for consideration change order number five for the sportscom outdoor pool. This change order adds twenty-eight days to the contract, changing the substantial completion date from May twenty-sixth to June twenty-third, two thousand and ten. The city of Murfreesboro accepted the pool on June thirtieth, two thousand and ten, which leaves seven days to apply liquidated damages to the contractor. This extension was recommended due to circumstances beyond the contractor's control and was verified by documents submitted by the same construction company to Johnson and Bailey for their review. Johnson and Bailey has recommended the twenty-eight days be added to the... Johnson and Bailey has recommended the twenty-eight days be added to the contract and that liquidated damages be assessed on seven days in accordance with the contract at two thousand dollars a day equalling fourteen thousand dollars. Therefore, it is recommended, based on recommendation of Johnson and Bailey, that twenty-eight-day extension be granted to the contract with Saint Construction Company and that liquidated damages be assessed in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars. Further recommended that the mayor be authorized to sign any documents relative to that. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have. And Mr. Lyle Lynch from Johnson and Bailey, he is here if you have a question on his recommendation.
Any questions for Mr. Goodwin on this change order number five? Vice Mayor.
Uh, can I elaborate, explain a little bit why this was changed? What was the, what was the issue that was beyond their control that we should?
Can I yield and let Mr. Lyle Lynch speak to that?
Hello, Vice Mayor. During the construction of this project, one of the features of the Sportscom Pool is a zero-entry depth play structure. And, uh, and starting in the kids' area there, there's a playground, uh, there's a tipping bucket, do you remember that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That device was specified, um, and there's not many manufacturers of that particular device. It's not a common, you know, common thing we can buy at Walmart. And it was, um, the, the pool, the city has a contract with the contractor. The contractor has a contract with a pool manufacturer, uh, the pool contractor, and the pool contractor was a supplier of that device. That device was scheduled to be in on a certain date, and they were twenty-eight days late in getting it. The contractor prevented, presented documentation showing that he had done everything possible. He had commitments from these people, and they simply failed to perform. And that's a circumstance that was beyond the contractor's control and that delayed the progress twenty-eight days. The general contractor was, um, worked diligently. He started out, uh, he was working crews seven days a week whenever time allowed or weather conditions allowed, but that, that device held up that pool that long.
Well, you know, I appreciate that. I understand it's not his concern, but, you know, is it our concern? I mean, I, I, I mean, I know we have, you know, if we, if we just throw things away, then we have, these, these contracts we enter into really don't really mean a lot.
We took a very close look at this, this part of the request. When we began, um, planning for the rebuild of the Sportscom Pool, we knew that the, the filter systems, uh, the other equipment were, uh, basically on life support the, the previous summer. We evaluate, and our consultant had suggested that we delay this project one whole year, um, which would have meant we would not have had a swimming season last summer, and staff did not feel that that was an acceptable option. We looked at a number of different situations, realizing there was a long lead time to build it, to get this pool equipment. One of the options we looked at was that the city would go out and buy this equipment directly, and we realized that probably wasn't a good place for the city to be where we were providing equipment to a contractor, um, and that could get a little bit complicated. So, there was a lot of analysis about how to, to do this. We knew, given the, the tight timeframe to construct the pool, that this could potentially be a problem. We pushed the contractor as hard as they ca, they, we could. They were working weekends and, and this was, what ended up happening was what we were warned, uh, that fall was that it's gonna be a tight time, timeframe, so.
And I, I specifically recall during that meeting that we said, "This is very aggressive. Are you gonna be able to meet this timeframe?" And I think the answer was, "Yes, we will."
Does this mean that, um, due to the lateness of the contractor, of this situation, that the city is getting back fourteen thousand instead of us paying fourteen? Is that in essence what this means?
Yeah. The liquidated damages would be paid to the city. Yes, ma'am.
It'd be fourteen instead of?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Or?
Or, what, what was the count?
It was, uh, it was twenty-eight days was what.
But they're agreeing to pay for seven.
Right.
So, it'd be forty-two or it'd be a total of fifty-six or take the fourteen, is what you're...
And, and part of our review, again, I, I said we took a, a very critical look at this. We were going back and looking at, uh, you know, the progress meetings and emails from the contractor. They, as soon as they got the contract, they jumped on the order. Um, it was a supplier, um, that they were relying on that it got, it got delayed, but the contractor did take every step that we felt he could have taken. Uh, it was just stuck in the factory.
There were other delays also in the equipment that went with the pool?
Well, there were, but the contractor generally worked around accommodating those. There was a large slide there, and it's a manufactured item similar to this. It was from a separate manufacturer, and there were some challenges getting it done, uh, getting it to the site on time, but, uh, that supplier was working with the contractor. Uh, this particular supplier just did not, and like I say, had, had agreed to a time schedule that would allow the contractor to finish on time, but did not meet his, uh, his commitments.
Didn't we open late anyway, later than we had anticipated?
Yes.
But it wasn't just twenty-one days, was it?
Of course, it opened right before the Fourth of July weekend. I don't know what the original scheduled date was.
We, we were scheduled to open up, I think, about thirty days prior to that.
Memorial or...
Yeah. There's a passage in the contract that says, um, and I'll just cover this part, and it says, uh, "A time extension can be granted," and one of the options is "circumstances beyond the contractor's control." And like Mr. Bratcher says, there's a little gray area, how much control did he have? But, uh, the question becomes, uh, like I say, uh, that there was a commitment made that wasn't met by his supplier.
It just, you know, I, it, I understand it's not his fault, it's, it's probably beyond his control, but when we enter into a contract, we, we assume that everybody's, somebody's got responsibility, and when, when things don't happen, it's very easy to fall back on us and go, "Well, you know, it's beyond our control," so that's just the way it is. You know, it, it, actually, the contract doesn't have much teeth in it if we don't stand by what we say we're gonna do. It's just, it's not a lot of money, but...
It's a lot of money.
I mean, it is a lot of money, but it, that's just the way I look at it.
Well, there are other, this was the fifth change order, right? There were four other change orders, correct?
Yes.
For a total?
That you recall the total of those? Um...
There were additions?
Yes, it was fifty thousand.
About fifty thousand total.
Just to touch on that.
And no other days were in those change orders, is that correct?
No, actually, there were two days, um, I believe that was for weather, that were given previously.
That's right.
The contract also makes provision for weather delays, and the, it's not a situation where if it rains, you get the day, the State Building Commission publishes a, a schedule of each month of how many days to figure in for unsuitable weather. And it rained just enough days not to get any weather delays, uh, through the whole project, except toward the end, and two were granted.
All right, you have this recommendation on this change order number five. What are your wishes?
Got a question.
Question.
Is the project coming under budget?
Uh, no, as we mentioned, it was a three and one-quarter million dollar project, and we ended up on the first four change orders going over by fifty thousand dollars, and that's a round number. And those were for some unforeseen conditions. There was, uh, pump equipment on the indoor pool as we got into that, uh, there were some conditions there, and there was some existing conditions with, uh, underground plumbing of, uh, what leaves the building, uh, that had to be addressed.
Mr. Lynch, is it safe to say that the contractor had a, a contract with a specific delivery date for the equipment with that supplier?
The general contractor had a contract with the pool contractor who built the pool, and I'm not really privy to exactly how the contract went between the pool supplier and the, I mean, sorry, the pool contractor and his equipment supplier. Uh, he did provide some emails showing commitments, you know, of certain dates and then how they were twenty-eight days in meeting, late in meeting those commitments. Uh, I don't know what kind of contract was provided between, or exists between the equipment supplier and the pool subcontractor.
Other questions or comments? I guess we could send the city's attorney back, if you wish.
Let's defer this, is that what you're saying?
On a three hundred, three-point-two-five million dollar contract, to lose forty-two thousand dollars and get it thirty days late on a tight schedule probably is not a difficult set of circumstances to understand. I mean, it's not exactly what you want, but, I mean, if council wishes to go back, that's certainly an acceptable alternative.
Mayor, I move we accept the recommendation of Parks Director.
Is there a second for that motion? And not hearing a second, is there another motion?
What are our options, Ms. McGann?
Uh, I was involved with the city manager in meeting with Mr. Lynch and reviewing this matter carefully before the recommendation was presented to you. I do believe that I agree the way our, the contract was written, uh, which is the standard AIA form, uh, that there would be an, an expectation and an entitlement on the contractor's part to receive the extension of time based on the information that Mr. Lynch had gathered that documented the contractor had done all that was in the contractor's power to do. Um, and the fact that, um, Mr. Lynch looked at it very carefully is reflected by the additional days in liquidated damages. I, he was, as I found him to be on other projects, very scrupulous in looking after the city's interests and adhering to the contracts, some very specific terms in making the recommendation. Well, certainly, if the council directs, look at it again and explore specifically whether or not the supplier to the pool subcontractor will provide us a contract. They wouldn't have any duty to do so, but that's the one bit of information we don't have. We did have the documentation as to the people we had the contract with, that they had done what they were supposed to do, and that is what entitles them to the additional days, not the pool supplier's contract.
You gonna tell me in English what our options are?
We'll look at it again, but I don't think the recommendation will change.
Mr. McFarland?
Ms. McGann, I, I was gonna, I, I, I do think that with the amount that we're talking about, although it's, it's a lot of money in the scope of the project, it's, you know, less than, less than one percent of the, or a little more than one percent of the total scope of the project. On a, I remember sitting here when we voted on, on doing this, and we knew with this, with the sole situations that we had around Sportscom and then on the Parks and Recreation Commission, we had no choice on moving for, not moving forward on doing something with the, with the Sportscom. But I don't, if we have a contract with an individual and a general contractor, and it's their responsibility to build a certain structure, I, I find it concerning that it can be, if a sub, if a general contractor subcontract with someone else, that it can be unforeseen whether they can get equipment or not.
I, I don't think it was unforeseen, as, as has been indicated. It was foreseen that it would be a very tight timetable to get the specialized equipment. Um, and emphasis was placed at the progress meetings from the very inception of the contract that that had to be ordered. It was. Commitments were made, um, and as Mr. Lynch indicated, it was a complicated thing because we had not just the general contractor, but the pool supplier. Uh, in fact, you know, representations were made to the council at, at meetings, we all heard that things were on schedule. That's because there had not been disclosure that the commitment that had been made by the pool supplier to the general contractor and by the general contractor to the city were in fact not going to be kept. When we discussed the, uh, analysis about time as to whether this was appropriate or inappropriate, we had some specific discussions about whether or not this was really a critical path item, whether or not work could have been done that would not have delayed the opening, and apparently, these issues were discussed. It would have been filling, uh, the pool up and then emptying it out again to install it. Um, would it have led to the quality, I forget if it was concrete or what the material was, but whether it was possible to engineer an alternative or whether this really was a critical path item? And, uh, I, I believe that it was. The option of excluding that piece of equipment, you know, was something that was also considered. Uh, so, the, there wasn't anything unusual in the contract terms, that it was the standard AIA terms in terms of additional time may be requested on bases of things not within the contractor's control. And this because, uh, the specification of the type of pool equipment we wanted was the city's specification, knowing that it was specialized and took a long lead time.
But the contractor signed the contract, correct?
And, and the contractor did what the contract called for him to do, which was to exercise all due diligence.
Okay. I mean, I, I think it's easy to argue semantics, but I, what my point is briefly is that there's so many moving parts in any project that the city does, that I don't think that we want to get in as a council on what is beyond a contractor's responsibility or not. If a contractor came through and said, "Hey, I can't get asphalt," or "I can't get gravel," you know, "because of X, Y, and Z," are we gonna be arguing every contract to say, "Well, is that beyond their control or not?"
Well, that's why the contract documents place that responsibility on the architect or the engineer. And as owner, we have the ability to object and challenge that, but, but they are the person deemed to have the expertise to make that analysis, so it is not, uh, uh, in the first instance, the owner's responsibility to do that. And as a, as I indicated, this timeline has been observed far more closely than some of our other projects with far longer periods of time involved.
I appreciate the job that Mr. Lynch and the architects do, but when it comes down to it, the architects are not responsible. It's, uh, they're sitting up here as responsible for it. So, that's my point that we use their recommendations, that they send us, but the bottom line, we're the ones who, who have to answer to it, so.
So, Mr. Lynch, am I correct that actually there's thirty-five days total at, at risk, so to speak, here, and they're agreeing to pay seven, and we're gonna eat twenty-eight? Is that correct?
You're exactly right.
All right. So, there's thirty-five total days. So, if the council had a motion that they would like to make regarding this, we could send the council back, or we could refuse to accept and ask them to pay and take it out of the retainage, I suppose.
Because I'm not that familiar with the contract, I was not on the council when the contract began, I would like, um, I don't know if I'm saying a delay or whatnot, and so, so someone can get with me and explain the contract, because I think I'm already here, and we've had a couple of change orders already on this particular item.
Four.
Five.
This is five.
Right.
We've already had four that we've approved, and this is a fifth one.
The other change orders didn't involve this piece of, of equipment. They were due to cir, uh, circumstances that were discovered in the course of construction that called for additional expenditure, too, correct?
So, it's added. Sometimes they, they get into something, they take something off, and it's still a change order.
So, we've had...
It could be a positive or a negative.
Altogether, we've had...
Change order number four was actually a deduct, and it was some changes that the Parks Department wanted to make, uh, actually saved a little bit of money.
So, on a three-point-two-million-dollar project, we had roughly fifty thousand dollars in change orders, and if we accept this, we're gonna get fourteen thousand back.
You're right.
So, we're gonna be netting thirty-six thousand dollars.
Change order.
So, about, about one-point-two percent on a, on a three-point-two-million-dollar project.
We get fourteen thousand back versus seventy if the contractor goes along with it and sues us after we go through it.
Yeah.
You can defer, or you can make a motion for something else?
Mayor, I move we deduct the entire amount.
You do not accept the change order. You do not accept the change order.
No.
All right. Is there a second to that motion? I'll rule it's failed for lack of a second. Is there another motion?
I believe we defer. Give council time to look this over and come back with a recommendation.
The council to do it, or the staff?
Staff and council.
All right. You have a motion to defer. Is there a second?
I'm going to second that one, but you're going to end up right back with you. I'm going to second that one, just so we can move on.
You have a motion to defer and a second. Any comments? Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. So we've deferred change order number five. Consideration for Architectural and Engineering Services for the renovation of the Old Fort Ag Center.
Thank you, Mayor. In the 2010 capital budget, funds were allocated for the renovation of the Old Fort Ag Center. This facility recently acquired from Rutherford County is proposed to be the new administrative offices for Parks and Recreation and serve as an area to conduct programs, support tournaments held in the park, and for meeting space. These renovations, we include a new roof, reworking the outside of the structure, a new HVAC system, renovations to the inside of the building, and renovations to the outside, including parking. Based on the review of Johnson &amp; Bailey Architects, the estimated construction cost for the renovation would be $693,850. Johnson &amp; Bailey has proposed full architectural services at an hourly rate not to exceed $60,963.40. It is a recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Department that the contract as presented be awarded to Johnson &amp; Bailey for the renovation of the Ag Center at Old Fort Park. And it is further recommended that the mayor, if approved, be authorized to sign any of the documents.
Mr. Goodman, for the amount included in full architectural services, would that be overseeing the rehabilitation and renovation?
Yes, sir. That includes preparation of the plans and specifications and overseeing the renovation.
The actual work?
Yes, sir.
How large is the Old Ag Center?
It is 11,000... I don't get it right here. It is 11,277 square feet.
And how much should we budget, Mr. Lynch and the CIP?
$756,000. So it's within budget.
And I'm sure you all discussed this at the Parks and Recreation meeting, but what are we going to do with the Barfield building where staff is? Are you guys out of space?
Mr. McFarland, we are out of space. We've got people stuck everywhere. We even had people in closets for offices. Our... We were... When we moved to Barfield, it was actually undersized for the staff. We used to be, here at City Hall, we occupied the wing that personnel had, plus where risk management is now. We moved there. We've been there for almost 11 years now. Record retention is one of the big things that we need extra space for. There's going to be ample space for our filing room, record retention. We have a mini barn outside at the Barfield area. We've got a room out in the maintenance area. The problem is, they're not climatized. And a lot of our central records are showing some deterioration. Of course, ice and other things are getting in there. And we're trying to preserve those as well. So this would actually double, a little more than double our office space. We have seven people at Barfield right now. We'll have 10 to 11 offices in this space. And the front of the Ag Center, the way it's situated, as you walk in, there's a meeting room on one side, and there's a kitchen facility on the other. And then you actually walk into the area where the agricultural extension agency used to be. And then you go to the back, and there's a maintenance area back there. We're going to add some restrooms for the tennis. The restrooms that we've got right now are just seasonal. We have to winterize those. So we really don't have a restroom facility. People in tennis, you know, I started closing the courts in the winter when it was 20 degrees at 7:00, and I started getting calls. So they're out there playing regardless of the temperature. So they're asking for some restroom facilities, and we're going to try to add them into this building plus convert some of that back so we can have some other support facilities for the tennis.
So what will we do with Barfield?
We'll move other staff into that area.
Any other questions? About $64 a square foot for renovate.
The estimate that Mr. Lynch had given us was $50 for renovation per square foot. The site improvements was in there, and plus there's some abatement for mold and for asbestos that we had greas and maloney to look at, which is minimal, but still would have to be done prior to the construction. So all that is included in that figure.
Is there a motion?
Move for a pool.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg, members of the council, if you recall, on August 12, 2010, there was a resolution authorizing an application for a local Parks and Recreation Fund grant from the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation for the renovation of Kids Castle and the surrounding family picnic area at Old Fort. And it was approved by city council at that time. This resolution approved matching funds in the amount of $200,000. At the August 12 meeting, it was agreed that if the city did receive the matching funds, the contract from the state would be brought back to the city council for final consideration. Recently, the department was notified that the city was awarded $150,000 in matching funds. A contract has been forwarded to the city, and we are requesting consideration and approval so we can proceed with the project. Further, we recommend that, if approved, that the mayor be authorized to sign any necessary documents related to the grant.
Any questions regarding this recommendation? Did we initially start out at $400,000?
Yes, sir. And the state... We do have $200,000 to match in the 2010 CIP.
So we'll end up spending $350 instead of $400?
The additions that we had for sidewalks and other amenities, picnic tables, et cetera, was a part of that $400 match. We'll compress that down and do what we can do with the additional 50.
And it's yet to be bid, is that correct?
It's yet to be bid.
So it could be more or less.
Well, we're going to try to keep it right where it is, Mayor.
And Mayor...
Mr. McFarland?
Not to go back to the other item, but the other item, just like this item, has not been bid yet either.
Yes, sir.
So that's... We're authorizing...
An expenditure.
The process.
Right.
I think we had a budget at $750,000, though, and they're expecting $693,000 plus $61,000, so. All right. Any other questions or comments regarding this acceptance of the grant?
Mayor, I move we approve the recommendation of the Director of Parks Preparation.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Goodman. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board to adopt new plant protection criteria and local limits. Sinking Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant NPDES Permit TN0022586 expires 04/28/11 and consider for adoption a resolution adopting a new Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department Plant Protection Criteria Table and a new Industrial User Local Limits Table. Welcome, Mr. Kirchner.
Thank you, Mayor. Under the Clean Water Act, federal Clean Water Act, we are issued this NPDS permit. It has certain stipulations, one of which is that we operate and maintain a pretreatment program regulating industries that may discharge contaminants into the sewer system that could harm the biological treatment at the wastewater treatment plant. Therefore, we protect that. There is criteria set up in... With EPA and 40 CFR 403, where we develop and enforce local limits to protect against these pass-through or interferences. TDEC is a requirement that we recalculate the ones we had in our current ordinance. And we did so. Smith &amp; Reed did the recalculation analysis. They used historical analysis that we did, that we had at the plant, flow history, removal efficiencies. And then we did some other analysis in order to establish these limits. Simply stated, what we're asking to adopt in this resolution is a... There's a list of contaminants that have been identified that we should set limits for. I would read them to you, but I can't pronounce all of them. There's about 26. And they're standard in the EPA regulations, many of those. But they did ask us to add silver and mercury into that, thinking that we might, for some reason, have that possible contaminant. We went through the calculations, provided those to the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. They have reviewed those and given us our approval. We... Public notice was in the newspaper. We advertised this. Our pretreatment coordinator met with those industries that are permitted. And we don't believe there's any industry that won't be able to meet these limits or anywhere near being close to not meeting them. And simply stated, really what this does, you have a set of limits, plant protection criteria. We don't want any concentration or mass loading greater than what's in that table get to the plant because it could inhibit the plant. In order to protect and have those at that, we have to back up the pipe to the industry and say, this industry can't discharge more than this amount so that in the aggregate, when it gets to the plant, it doesn't exceed the plant protection criteria. So the local limit is that the discharge from the industries that would aggregate and come to the plant. And the plant protection criteria is that concentration and mass loading required in order to save from interferences and problems at the wastewater plant. The Water and Sewer Board recommends adopting Resolution 11 R03, which establishes the revised plant protection criteria and new industrial user limits. Previously, we did not have industrial user limits in our ordinance. We just had our plant protection criteria. But the state wanted us to go up the pipe and set those local limits.
All right. Any questions from Mr. Kirchner regarding this recommendation to adopt new plant production protection criteria and local limits? All right. Then what are your wishes regarding this recommendation?
Mayor, I move we approve the recommendations of our Water and Sewer Director.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
And you have this resolution also?
Yes.
All right. What are your wishes regarding this resolution?
I think... Was that the resolution that was...
Mayor, did you vote?
No, I did. Aye. All right. You have this recommendation to adopt the plant criteria and local limits. Now you have this... Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll. I'll vote aye before we get there, so.
You vote first.
I'm going to vote first. Take the pressure off you both, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 25 and 1/4, signed. Section 25 and 1/4, 24, 25, 26, to correct a reference. And also, we'll schedule a public hearing to consider amendment to Chapter 25 and 1/4, signed. Section 25 and 1/4, 24, 25, 26, also to correct a reference. Mr. Whitaker?
Evening, Mayor, Council.
What have you done?
In November of last year, the building code staff and legal department staff recommended significant changes to our sign ordinance dealing with development entrance signs, planned unit development signage, as well as our application for signage. In those, we increased the signage for planned unit developments, if you recall, and also our development entrance signs. There was a lot of changes made to our sign ordinance. As hard as we may try, sometimes when you're having to delete some areas, add some areas, your numbering gets off. Our sign ordinance references throughout different areas to ensure that those areas are referenced correctly. These changes are necessary. Most of them are just renumbering, with exception of Section 2. Section 2 deals with the temporary signs. If you recall, we decided to make the temporary signage in the GDO the same as the rest of the city. We did that. We increased the temporary signage from 1 in the GDO to 3. One of the sections we did overlook was under temporary signage, was also the directional signs. It was not our intention to leave that in. The temporary... Or the directional signs, I'm sorry, in GDO are 2 per event, 1 per lot. Throughout the rest of the city, those are actually 4 per event and 2 per lot. It was our full intentions to make those the same as well. Section 2 will change that. I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding these changes and ask that you consider this on first reading as well as set a public hearing for these changes.
All right. Any questions from Mr. Whitaker? If not, is there a motion we accept on first reading this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. And Ms. McGannan to set a public hearing.
March 10.
March the 10. All right. Is there a motion we accept?
So moved. With my move, we set a public hearing, March 10.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. At this time, we'll consider recommendations to the Planning Commission to approve a 1.56 acre tract on Epps Mill Road as an outside-the-city sewer customer for the Dollar General store development. Welcome, Mr. Adelai.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. During its regular meeting on February 2 of 2011, the Murfreesboro Plan Commission considered a request from Rhodes Development Group for approximately 89.35 acres along Epps Mill Road to be annexed or in the alternative to be served sewer as an outside-the-city sewer customer. After discussion of the matter, the Plan Commission determined that the area is not presently contiguous with the Murfreesboro City Limits, is rather remote from the current city limits an annexation would necessitate, including numerous other property owners, and the area is not within the city's urban growth boundary. The Plan Commission unanimously recommended that the county... That the city should not proceed with annexation of the property and should serve it as an outside-the-city sewer customer in accordance with Murfreesboro City Code, Section 33, Day 2.1.1, utilizing the CH Commercial Highway zoning classification. However, after further review, the Murfreesboro Plan... The Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department has modified its support of serving the entire 89.35 acres tract. The department does not support providing approval for the serving the entire 89.35 acres, but supports serving only the proposed area needed for a proposed Dollar General development. There's proposed on approximately 1.56 acres of the tract and for which a site plan is expected for submission for the Plan Commission and staff review[1795.22] is expected for submission for the Plan Commission and staff review in the very near future. Accordingly, the matters before the City Council for action, staff recommends approval of as an outside-the-city sewer customer of only the 1.56 acre tract needed for anticipated Dollar General store. No public hearing is necessary. And I will add that in the future, when we receive additional development plans, we'll know a little bit better of what their characteristics are and how we might be, and will be, or can be able to provide them sewer service, and we'll bring them as outside-the-city sewer customers if we can serve it.
Any questions for Mr. Adalot?
I just want to bring out a point that the Dollar General, I have represented them in the past on some of their locations, and I do represent them on some presently, but not at this particular site. I do not represent the property owner, Dollar General, or the developer whatsoever in this location. So I'll point that out and clarify that.
Do we have any control over the way this Dollar General store will look?
Yes, sir. To some considerable extent, we will be requiring that they conform to our development regulations in such requirements as addressing the street with the front, the site design, the drainage, the parking, the landscaping, orientation of structure, the height setbacks. All those are within our purview. And actually, we've had a meeting with them already. To be very frank with you and the council, the original submittal that the county's planning department actually approved, we looked at and we felt a little bit disappointed, particularly about the traffic access. We felt that their traffic access was not what it really should be, considering the development potential of that area. We met with the developer, and he was very receptive to changing and improving his plans to conform with our expectations and suggestions, and we are waiting for him to resubmit after our meeting.
So we are expecting them to have a curb cut on this...
Actually...
Which is only for their particular store?
Mayor, actually, what the original plan that was approved by the county was for a curb cut home to their property with a left turn from Epps Mill Road into their site. We suggested instead not to do that, but rather to extend Capital Way as a street along the east side of this lot and have an access drive coming off of Capital Way extended to the south. And actually, we also suggested that they flip their site so that the front of their building would face towards the north and to the east, towards interchange, rather than having the back of their building facing interstate. We thought that the front of the building should. They were very receptive, and we're waiting for them to resubmit based on that, and we don't think there's going to be a problem. The developer actually thought that was a better approach after he got to looking at it.
Building materials?
It's my understanding it's going to be mostly masonry. They may have, we may have a little bit less control over all of their appearance. The one that we looked at on Manson Pike recently, the planning commission, the developer's willing to upgrade it. I'm expecting that he's going to use several of those elements onto this building, perhaps not all of them, but several of them.
And there're not going to be any other suites? It's just going to be this one store?
On this project, they are showing us a site plan for only a Dollar General store with no additional lease spaces.
If we serve them as customers outside the city, I think they have to agree to follow in the same rules and regulations, and also agree to not oppose annexation if we decide to do that in the future. Is that correct?
That is correct. We will actually have additional paperwork for them that before they get their building permits, they'll sign, and this will be a recorded instrument that both the developer and the, I guess, the permitee will be having, they'll work that through the Water and Sewer Department.
All right, any other questions regarding this recommendation? Is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Adalot. Thank you for working with this plan. All right, are there any beer permit applications?
No, sir. Not tonight.
You have before you a revised list of the statements to be considered for payment. Are there any questions regarding bills to be paid? If not, is there a motion that we pay the bills?
So moved. Move we pay the bills. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. As to board and commission appointments, I recommend that we reappoint Bill Allen, Chris Massaro, John D. Blankenship, Alan Richardson, Don Turner, Larry Wilkerson to the Old Fort Golf Commission. I also recommend that we appoint Hattie Rankins to the Murfreesboro Housing Authority, and that's upon the recommendation of the Executive Director, Pat Nolan. I make those recommendations to you.
I move approve the recommendations of the mayor.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Other business to come before the council? Mr. Ives?
Mayor, council, good evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of Chad Gurkey, our airport manager, with a recommendation regarding termination of the Grace heliport lease. The city leased area that's part of Central, now Central Middle School, Central Magnet School, I guess now, the city leased that about 10 years ago to establish a heliport to serve the, now the old hospital. The lease provided, among other things, that if it was no longer necessary for the hospital, that it would terminate, and of course, the hospital has relocated, and they have their own heliport on the hospital site. We've been working with the county schools to terminate the lease. The reason we're bringing in a termination agreement is that the lease also provided that pretty much all of the improvements that were made for the heliport be removed, the fencing, the concrete, in particular, be removed from the school site. School has decided they'd like to have those things. They want the fence to stay, and the gates to stay, and the concrete to stay. We have removed the markings from the concrete. We've also removed the navigational lighting system, but we left an outlet for them to use for their future purposes. Since we're modifying a bit what was to be done at the end of the lease, we're asking council to approve this termination agreement. I've also discussed this with the attorney for the county schools. They're amenable to this form, ready to go, and the school is anxious to get the control of that property back for, I think, they think it's going to warm up one of these days, and they'll have it for spring baseball. So recommend your approval of the termination agreement. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ives regarding this lease termination agreement?
May I move approve the recommendations of our Assistant City Attorney?
Second.
All right, motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Other business to come before the council? If not, you're adjourned. Thank you.